Being your most counsel person.
Mayor, council, your mics are live.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In light of the fact that the mayor and the mayor pro tempore are not here, you all will need to elect someone to lead the meeting, if you don't mind doing that, nominate one of you to be the.
I'll nominate Jerry Morse, actually. Mr. Morse.
And if you could vote.
All in favor? All right, Mr. Morse, floor is yours, sir.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to Indian Trail Town Council. We're having four development workshops this evening, starting off with the hub at the downtown Indian Trail. At this time, I'll turn it over to Patrick, if he has anything to say.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Just to remind, Mike, what I go loud, just to remind everyone, we do have four fifteen minutes apiece. And the first two, the Moser Group, were here before, so this is second round. And Fenchur is a brand-new development, and Sun Valley kind of coming in again as a partial development. And back to you, Mr. Morse.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. McKenzie.
Perfect. Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the time to present tonight. My name's McKenzie Moser with the Moser Group, and I'm excited to share with you the hub at downtown Indian Trail. We wanted to come before you tonight with one more informal meeting prior to the rezoning submission, to inform you of the good news we have regarding the progress of the site and recap the project. The hub at downtown Indian Trail is a reaction to the downtown and uptown Indian Trail master plan from the town. I believe this master plan was a good decision from the town, and I'm excited to share with you the updated proposed mixed-use development that will support the future professionals, entrepreneurs, millennials, and future potential high-profile project of the light rail. This will bring a brand-new product and begin the cleanup of Independence. Indian Trail has not seen a project like this. This is looking ahead to the future of Indian Trail, so let's take a look. The subject size is 28.28 acres, touching Highway 74, Chestnut Parkway, North Indian Trail Road, and Nelson Lemon Drive. The project includes a hotel with 110 to 112 rooms, two phases of multifamily encompassing 650 units of urban-style apartments that will be three to four stories. It offers a dense, walkable front door for the town of Indian Trail, and creates a true live-work-play environment adjacent to the town's new town hall, Carolina Court's sports complex, the Union Aquatic Center, the Veteran Memorial Garden, and many other future developments in this area, including the proposed artificial turf field. This creates a true downtown feel with the density and mixes of uses. This community will have an energetic lifestyle, will be a place for millennials. It keeps young ones at home and helps businesses thrive, a true live-work-play community. This slide is the site plan designed by Land Design. Land Design is the consultant from the project, who's also here tonight and can help answer any questions on the site plan. So, looking at the site plan, you'll notice a few changes from our original presentation. Due to the wetlands results and not being able to come to an agreement with the landowner of the 3.15 acres on the corner of Chestnut Parkway and 74, we have relocated the hotel on the site and removed the self-storage facility. We have maximized the development potential while preserving the wetlands to use as an amenity to the project with amazing landscaping and walking trails. Starting at the block at 1:00, this site plan allows for a grand sense of arrival along 74. It will also begin the cleanup of Highway 74 and begin to change the culture of Independence. Moving on, the next block, the relocation of the hotel allows for excellent visibility. The hotel, as stated, will be part of Phase One, along with 350 of the apartments. The apartments will have a resort-style swimming pool and amenity clubhouse in both phases. And lastly, moving to the last block, the connectivity to Nelson Lemon Drive. This will be converted into a two-way traffic with 60-degree on-street parking provided by the developer. About the hotel, the hotel will be four-to-five-story, modern hotel brand, will be a part of Phase One, and will serve not only the town of Indian Trail, but all of the sport tournaments, sports facilities, Carolina Courts, businesses, et cetera. Allows all to stay within the downtown area of Indian Trail. The hotel will have a Class A amenities package, including the saltwater resort-style pool, coffee bar, fitness center. It will be tech-forward with a lounge area and will be a Class A brand. The Class A brand will be comparable to what is pictured, although we can't release name brands yet. These are examples of the exteriors. Moving on to the multifamily, we've partnered with Gray Star, which they are the global leader in rental housing, and to obtain their expertise on a Class A multifamily project for the hub. They are also in attendance tonight and will be available for any questions regarding the multifamily portion of the site. As stated, the multifamily will be in two phases. The first phase will consist of 350 units of rental product, clubhouse, and amenities. The second phase will have 300 units of rental product, clubhouse, and amenities, all three- and four-story, flat-roof, urban-style product to add to the ambiance of the downtown. The Class A amenity packages and the Class A unit finishes, which includes the granite countertops, LVT flooring, designer-light fixtures, high-end appliances, as we're going to see in the next few slides. These images are actual renderings of Gray Star products, along with the next couple of slides, actual Gray Star projects. You can see the exterior and the amenities. This slide shows more exterior with the Class A materials, flat roofs to create that urban style, this dense, walkable, front-door feel. Lastly, this is the interior look of the apartments. And then the unit mix rents. As you can see, these numbers are very competitive rents for the market. So, thank you for allowing the opportunity to share about the hub at downtown Indian Trail. We would love to get feedback from you so that we can submit for rezoning and continue to move forward.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions, comments? Councilman Head?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few. So, in, in, looking at the, at the site map, you have a pool in the, for the hotel, is that indoor? Because you're not showing it on the, on the site plan.
Most likely, it will be indoor.
Most likely, okay. Because you have, and then what I noticed was you were showing Phase One, having a clubhouse and a pool, Phase Two didn't, but you are showing two clubhouses on-site plan, is that correct?
Correct. Both phases will include clubhouse and amenities packages?
I'm concerned about the number of, what is it, 650? You know, it, I think when this first started off, it was 250, and kept growing and kept growing. And my major concern is, we're wanting to do uptown as well as downtown. In uptown, what we've seen has apartments in it, so I don't want to get overloaded with, with apartments. So, let me ask a couple of questions. In terms of, when are you looking at, if everything is approved, when are you looking at starting?
Within six to nine months of approval for Phase One, which is the 350 units and hotel. That should be completed within one year of the construction beginning.
So, you're looking at basically two years?
Correct.
That's pretty quick. The, the other thing that, that I had mentioned at the last meeting was retail. So, there's no retail involved in this plan, as it, as we view it now, right?
As of today, no.
Okay. All right, again, my biggest issue with this would be, so after two years, when would you start Phase Two?
That would be determined by Gray Star.
What was your last name, Josh?
Glover.
Glover.
Afternoon, y'all. So, yeah, as it relates to the timing, I mean, I think McKenzie did a good job of touching on kind of our plan in terms of starting Phase One would be to move as quickly as possible, which is groundbreaking, yeah, six to nine months after the rezoning, and then we would proceed through construction pretty quickly. And then Phase Two, you know, like McKenzie said, it's going to be a little bit market-dependent. But, you know, what we've seen in the market, and we actually managed, prevents it, Indian Trail, which is kind of the only other Class A project in town. Market's pretty strong, and so my gut is that it would be, you know, anywhere from two to three years following the completion of Phase One. But, you know, we won't know that until we get through and start.
Two to three years before you would start Phase Two, is that what you're, you're saying?
Uh, no, that would be delivery. Assuming that Phase One started leasing well, we would, you know, start advancing drawings and stuff on Phase Two.
Well, thank you very much. We've got to kind of keep this moving forward. We have four presentations in a limited time span. I, too, have some comments and questions I'll share with those in an email to the town manager and have him pass those on. Thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presenter? Ms. Moser?
The Moser Group.
Sun Valley Station, okay. Floor is yours.
Awesome. The next project we're presenting is Sun Valley Station. We've brought it to council before, but just wanted to have one more informal meeting prior to the submission, because there have been a few changes because of the super street and NCDOT placing the bulb, so we'll just go through all of that. Sun Valley Station is located at 6400 Old Monroe Road, consisting of 8.87 acres, and is proposed 37,500 square feet of retail with a commercial out parcel pad of 1.39 acres. This map shows the location of Sun Valley Station, that we would like for it to be a regional attraction that we would pull from not just Indian Trail residents, but residents from Stallings, Matthews, Weddington, Monroe, and beyond for the uses that are proposed at Sun Valley Station. The purpose of Sun Valley Station will be to provide both friends and families a chance to reconnect while complementing the already diverse options in the entertainment district by providing fun, fitness, and shopping. The next slide outlines where specifically Sun Valley Station is located, directly across the street from Sun Valley Commons, beside Harris Teeter, across the street from Publix, and then Sun Valley Elementary, Middle, and High School. We've looked for years to add on to the entertainment district at Indian Trail, and we have had a lot of requests for the bowling alley, family entertainment center use. The operators are here tonight with their business plan and will be available to answer any questions. Myron and Claudette are going to speak a little bit about the Family Fund Center.
Good evening. My name is Myron Jacobs, and this is my wife Claudette Jacobs. We've been residents of Indian Trail for the past 14 years. We currently own Sun Valley Salon Suites, which is in Indian Trail, and we also own another business in Monroe, which is within Union County. We've developed a business plan to open a family entertainment center, which is sometimes called a Family Fund Center, within Sun Valley Station, which the Moser Group is developing on Old Monroe Road. Our Family Fund Center will include attractions such as bowling, laser tag, bumper cars, and arcade games with a prize redemption center. It will also include a snack bar for food, for food options. We've done extensive research and believe that this venture will be a big success within Indian Trail. We've consistently heard that entertainment options in Indian Trail, especially for families, is very limited. We've also heard things such as, you know, we have a really nice movie theater in town, but beyond that, there's not much else to do. We're looking to provide another entertainment option to keep our residents local and not have to drive to Charlotte or elsewhere to be entertained. In addition, we will be providing locally sourced jobs. We're excited to hopefully fulfill this need within Indian Trail and hope to see all of you at our Family Fund Center. Thank you for your time, and we will be available for any input or questions you may have for our proposed facility.
Thank you very much. I'd like to turn this over to Mayor Alvarez, now that he's here.
Yes, thank you. I have one quick question, since I came in later. It is a full-size bowling alley, it's not, correct? How many lanes?
Twelve.
Twelve lanes? Is there a snack area?
Twelve lanes, snack area, a laser tag arena, two-story laser tag arena, bumper cars, so about 10, so bumper cars, and probably 50 or 60 or so arcade games.
Okay, thank you. I love it. Any questions?
Sorry, McKenzie, actually. This, this Sun Valley Station has changed from the last time, the last time you spoke, it was the bowling alley, I think, there was a gym, if I'm not mistaken, and also PetSmart. Is that still the concept, or this is now?
Yes. I'll keep going with the presentation that shows all the uses.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Thanks, guys. So, moving on, like you said, it also, I don't know why it's a little messed up on the screen, but there's a fitness center included in the project, and I actually have a local fitness user that is wanting to expand from within Indian Trail to a larger facility. They were unable to come tonight, but they're, they would like to be at Sun Valley Station. Additionally, the site includes retail with the pet supply store, and according to Gary Evans, who the town hired on to do some of the retail research, a pet supply store is one of the top 13 items that every town should have, so we've included that in this project. The next slide shows the site plan, which is similar to what we previously presented. However, there were changes made due to NCDOT taking and the bulb placement on the site. We have worked with NCDOT to still allow great access to the site and visibility for the users. There's ample parking above what is required. An additional opportunity at Sun Valley Station is the out parcel user, which would allow for any use allowed within the zoning overlay. And that is all for Sun Valley Station. We're happy to answer, any questions?
When do you suspect this would come up for a vote to council? And if approved, when do you suspect construction and completion?
We would like to submit the rezoning ASAP in the next few weeks. As soon as it's approved, we would like to begin construction within six months of the approval.
Um, if you can go back two slides, just to look at the plan itself.
Sure.
Right. The, the last time you came, I think, one of the questions that we expressed was the actual location of the physical buildings. The proximity to the neighborhood right behind is a question that we have. If you have a bowling alley, you have retail, and you have a gym, especially with the retail of the pet supplies, you would have trucks coming in there delivering stuff. So, the thing is the timing, as to when to deliver, the noise to the neighborhood, how can we lessen that? So, my question essentially is, did you, and Patrick, I, I don't know, I don't have the whole plan before me, but would these buildings moved back, or are they still in the same spot, same place, same location? Because that concern has, still exists. I like the idea of the, the station in terms of the amenities that it's going to have for residents, the bowling alley. Couple of weeks ago, I had to go down to Matthews, who dropped my son and pick him up. Be much easier for me to come across town, and, you know, the money earned would be in Indian Trail, but that's just one concern that I have there in terms of the proximity to that.
Sure, that's definitely something that we're aware of, and we will create a berm so that it isn't a problem with the residents behind. So, it's something that we are working on.
They will be required to provide the buffer, that's number one, and if they're providing also a berm to add for noise and vibration, I think that would be very helpful, too. But the first step is to make sure that that buffer that we acquired is still there, and if it's a wooded area, too, that would be very helpful, too.
Okay.
As soon as we get this submitted, we will look into those things, Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you.
One last question, McKenzie. Have you been in contact with any of the homeowners that are directly affected by where it's going to go, and gotten any feedback from them?
I have not personally. We have not yet, but it's something that we do when we submit the rezoning package, and we'll be in contact with all of them.
I'm, I love the idea. I, I think it would be a big value add for the town, but also, and I would think they would agree in our position up here, those that it's directly affecting, I think we would all appreciate that they would be involved in, in the noise control and how it's done and what, what their expectation is.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I just want to comment that it's refreshing to see something like this that could be geared towards our youth to enjoy in that area, especially since we, we know about all the problems that have existed in the last couple of years with bored teenagers. So, I'm kind of excited about this project, so good luck.
Thank you.
Only comment I have, please no more fast food.
Not planned for this.
Don't put any age limit on the bumper car thing.
Are you going to be out there?
Oh, man. A man lost his toupee one night when we were.
That's awesome. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fenchur Development Potter Road. Thank you, I think I dropped them outside.
Tommy Price, right? Fenchur Development? Yeah?
Good evening, council, thank you for the opportunity to be back in front of you again. Tonight, we bring to get your feedback and, and any direction you may have on a development that we would like to bring before you at the corner of Potter and Fenchur Road. The project will consist of 274 two-story townhomes. We have, you see from the drawing, one of the responses from staff was that we do a roundabout to connect these two, to help with the traffic flow and the walkability of the neighborhood. That area right there has really been a hard place to keep up over the last several years. We've continually gotten letters about trash dumping, and there were some old mobile homes back there. We've cleaned all that stuff up, but we truly feel like this is a project that will begin the cleanup of that entire Fenchur Road corridor there. We are supplying, there's over two and a half miles of sidewalks and trails for walkability. We've got two dog parks, clubhouse, we've got a community park that doesn't show up, but it's down in the bottom. We've got a pool, clubhouse, and we've, we're showing four commercial buildings to service these residents with, can't tell exactly what they'll be right now, we just need to see what the demand and what would serve the residents the best. The park to the east of Fenchur Road is the Old Pine Lake Nursery, and I did a little description, that used to be a mobile home park with, at one time, 65 mobile homes there. At one time, there were five mobile homes on the other side of Fenchur, but we have since torn four of those down. There's one left, but nobody's living in there, and that one will get demolished when we start construction. We feel like with the area that's starting to head up towards Stallings, it just will keep a lot of the people local in town. We've got the services there with the commercial to benefit the, the residents. What we're asking for are two-story townhomes. Be one-car garage, three bedrooms, two and a half bath, maybe 1,500 to 1,800 square feet per unit.
Will there be two-car garages as well?
No, one-car garage.
Okay.
So, tonight, we're just asking for any input you may have. I know you've already taken a look at this, and suggestions, input, things that, that you'd like to see, so that we can do our best to incorporate them.
Um, well, I'll speak on my behalf right now. The, this is relatively new to me. It was, as far as I'm, I know it was dropped in my lap Thursday afternoon to see this. I think we've had some, some good discussions in the past with other projects, and I'll probably be wanting to reach out and see if we can talk a little bit more, once I can digest this a bit.
The area to the east of Fenchur Road was rezoned for townhomes back 2006 or something, but then, when 2008 came... and six or something, but then when two thousand and eight came, things slowed way down, and I think at this point, you, that whole area, all the way up to Fitcher. So we're not asking for anything that hadn't already been approved once there, but...
It's the second portion. So it's really the, the third, the one that has a three, that's what you're asking? That's what, on, on here? There's a section that has a three on there?
Yeah, well, we're actually asking for the whole project because...
But you're saying that one and two are already approved?
They were approved, but time is reverted.
So you'll come back, you'll, you'll come back with everything?
Correct. We'll come back with, with the entire project.
All right.
Can I get, can you get a clarification on that?
Go ahead.
What, what do you mean by it reverted? That it was approved for a rezone and then...
The rezoning, Patrick helped me here, it's only good for how many years?
Two.
Two years?
Yeah, a, a conditional zoning is good for two years unless the council has specifically granted a five, a, a exception to five years.
Thank you so much.
All right. So the question is, in there, in terms of, you're looking at what, I think you mentioned...
Two seventy-four.
Two seventy-four units, mostly three bedrooms, or?
The, right now, the intent is for all of them to be three-bedroom, two and a half-bath.
One-car garage?
One-car garage.
And you're going to be able to provide parking in there, and that's something that you'll kind of have to decide?
Yes, we've actually, in talking with, with staff and going through a few meetings with them, we've actually, and you can see on there, we've actually created a lot of extra parking spaces so that people aren't parking on the street. We've got pocket areas all through it that we've got set up for overflow parking.
Quickly, Tommy, can you just tell me where Fitcher is? Point that out.
Fitcher is right...
Got you. Okay.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at, Mr. Price?
We are very preliminary here. If we got the zoning approval, it would probably take us, how long, eight months? Ten months for design? Mark Cym with Land Design is also involved with this.
Yeah, assuming that we get through the TIA and the rezoning, we wouldn't be submitting probably until earliest July, and I would think we got it approved within a few months. It'd still take another three to four months to design the plans, so I'd say, I couldn't imagine you start ground, breaking ground until early next year.
Probably. We're, we're in the process now of going ahead and getting the TIA, getting the school impact studies, the things that we know you guys will want, so those are in the works now.
When you build this development, are you planning on phasing it or, and, you know, trying to do the whole thing at once, or what's your...
We're probably going to work with council on that. A lot of the phasing, on most projects, it's, it's dependent on cut and fill, balanced site, you know? It's easy to say, let's do this one first, but if it needs a hundred thousand yards of fill, then you got a hundred and fifty thousand yards over here that you need to clear to, to build the one, and we're not that far to know that, that yet.
Tommy, I have a question for you. Fitcher is a state road, right?
Correct.
So if you take off with the two projects on either side of Fitcher, there'll be a lot of impact on Fitcher during construction and traffic. So I think that's why probably Mr. Moore asked the question about phasing the project. So that, that would, I don't want to say that's a challenge, but that there'll be some impact on Fitcher when it comes to traffic if you take off with both sides of the project.
Correct, but even if we did do one, even if you started on the east side, and you got that ready and you moved to the other side, if you started construction on, you won't be building both sides at the same time. I mean, it'll, it'll walk its way across.
I think we might, we would probably permit it as one package, but we would have phased construction.
So when you talked about cut and fill, you, you're going to cut and fill one side, rather than not crossing Fitcher all the time, getting dirt from here to there?
We'll have a lot better idea of that once we get into design drawing, you know, we'd be more willing to work with it.
It would be our intention from a cost-saving standpoint to be able independently balance both sides of the project.
Yeah, it'd be nice if each side balanced, and then we don't have to cross it off.
Okay. I agree.
And another question, and I wasn't paying as good attention as I needed to in the very beginning. Where the big pond is located?
Correct.
What's with that property right there?
That is the Old Pine Lake Nursery.
Okay, that's already...
And that pond actually serves for the irrigation for the nursery. And they are really excited about trying to use a little, they need more water. But that, that pond is not on our property.
So would you be feeding that pond?
Well, that'll depend on what my engineer tells me. I'm not, we can't use this water quality.
You mentioned that they're excited. Does that mean that they're going to get water from you?
Well, that was the original intent, but then we learned we can't, we were, originally, we wanted to use that as water quality, BNP, but we can't. So it may be that some of our clean water from our BMPs can get to it. I may be digging a hole here.
No, that's correct.
Let Mark answer that, if you will, but the intent would be if we can work it to where some of our clean water from the BMPs can go into that pond to help them out, it would be fine.
Yeah, we'll have to treat all of our own water on site.
Right.
Do you have a commercial aspect to this?
We do. The four buildings that you see up top there, we have no intended uses for them right now. It'd be more of waiting to see what the, the residents feel like, the need, what will service them better. We've set them up so that all the residents, I have walkability to them, so hopefully they'll be community service businesses that will take care of not only them, but the rest of them that we're around here.
Will you be planning on putting a sidewalk along Potter's Road from one end of your proposed development to the other?
Assuming that's probably going to be...
That'll be a requirement, the entire length.
Now, one thing I do see on there, though, that I asked Mark about is I'm not sure we're going to be able to plant trees on both sides of Potter Road, although we don't want to.
I'm sorry, you already submitted that, Tommy.
Yeah, we're going to honor you, we're going to have to have you honor that.
I tried to, I tried to give him the change, but we didn't have time.
Any more questions?
Well, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Any, any comments or questions when you guys really start looking at this? If you'd please either get them to Patrick, he can get them to me, or email me direct, it'd be great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get them to Patrick, and Patrick will get them back to you. Yep.
Thank you.
Guess it's you again, Tommy.
Do I?
It's you again.
It is.
Yeah.
Just waiting...
I think we've lost our mayor for...
Yeah, he's, 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 he's gone for a little bit. Jerry, you can take over again.
All right. This next little submission to you guys is, is Sun Valley Marketplace. We have a hotel and some commercial there beside the Lowe's on Seventy-four. There we go. Our understanding is that the hotel and the commercial are by right uses, so what this presentation concentrates on is the apartment site. What we're asking for is two hundred and sixty-four units. Three in the core there around the pool. We'd like to request four stories for those. The rest of them will be three stories, and part of the reason for the four-story is if we can put four stories there, we can afford to put elevators in them. We learned a great deal over at Copas One as far as the rentability, and a lot of the first-floor units went really quick. In fact, they were the first ones to go because people just didn't want to climb stairs. Unfortunately, with three stories, it makes it difficult to be able to afford the extra money for the elevator. So we would like to do three stories, uh, four stories for those three core buildings to service our older renters, people that, that can't climb three flights of stairs. We've got, there again, based on our experience over at Copas, we've added some amenities here that we failed to, to put over there. We'll have our clubhouse and business center, we'll have the workout and exercise facility. We're also going to add to this a half multipurpose gymnasium. We'll have our pool, we've got some pickleball courts up there, we've got community gardens, we've got gazebo and outside grilling area, we've got walking trails. There's about two and a quarter miles of sidewalks in this neighborhood. We'll have optional concierge services for laundry and trash services, so we're trying to, to add more amenities than, than we had over at Copas. And we feel like this is a great area. We have three accesses to Seventy-four, and then there'll be one access out to Wesley Chapel Stouts through that parking lot. We're connecting to the Lowe's parking lot. The location is good. It adds walkable, commercial, walkable services for the tenants. We just feel like it'd be a, a really good project for, for the town. And you see, these, this project will be designed like Copas. That's why I have those pictures in there. It turned out really nice. I think it's an, an asset for the town.
Shirley?
There were no corners cut.
My question is, when you start getting to the fourth floor, that it's a little hard for the fire trucks, or they're ill-equipped to get up to a higher elevation like that?
I don't think they have a problem with four. Now, if we went six, and I, I'll have a conversation with the fire chief and just ask him that question, I'll make that note.
I don't know, Mr. Sadik knows that or not. You know, Patrick, about the fourth or...
Yeah, I, I think if you get to the five floors, probably the fire department will have an issue with that because of the unavailability of the equipments, like ladder trucks and stuff. But for four, I have not heard anything from Johnny Blythe that he has an issue with that. I think we're okay with four.
I spoke to him about that when we were doing Copas, and we didn't ask for four, four floors over there, but we found, in fact, Gray Star made mention that they were our management team over there, and we didn't know how the rental would go, but first floors went really quick, and with the elevator service in there on those buildings, I think it'll, it'll add more opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
But also, of course, just like over there, we'll give discounts to teachers and police and firemen.
So Tommy, how about we do this? Then Shirley raises a good question. Patrick will ask, will just ask to confirm with, with Chief Blythe in terms of that?
Sure.
Yes, that'll be one of the questions.
I may need to call two, just not sure.
I do have a question. When this was present, presented prior to now, it went all the way back to the train tracks, right? So it's a lot bigger? Or this is different? Am I missing something here?
This, this is part of a bigger project. This is about twelve and a half acres of a potential sixty-acre project.
So you're just presenting phase one?
Yes.
Okay, good. In terms of the retail out front that I see, is that retail or that's, that's restaurant?
I think we'll, there again, I think there's, in that row of buildings, I think there's one sandwich shop or something like that, but if we could get a restaurant to come in there, I think it'd be really good.
I mean, like a good steakhouse, so that way people don't have to go to Monroe or Matthews. It's easy to get to on Seventy-four. I was just, that's just me thinking out loud, by the way. Go ahead, Jerry.
All right. You, you had, you, you stated you had three entrances on Seventy-four?
Yes.
Can, can you point those out? Because my eyes are failing.
We have one here, one here.
Yeah? Okay, is that the Lowe's entrance?
That's through Wesley Chapel Stouts and...
Oh, so that's the Lowe's?
Yeah. You know, just a comment, one of the things that I've been experiencing on the super street, other than just about got hit head-on twice in the last five days since they've opened up Unionville Indian Trail, the left turn off of Seventy-four.
I didn't know that was...
They do now, and a lot of people don't know that. They, they think that you can exit Unionville Indian Trail Road into that left-turn-only lane, and that's the problem. But my, my question really is, is we have a, a high rate of flow now going through Seventy-four, and especially up in, well, between Unionville and Fairview and Indian Trail Road, those two roads. It's, it's dangerous to pull out onto Seventy-four now, and, and then I have a concern about de-accelerating, you know, into that project as well. Have you all given much thought to that?
That's, like I said earlier, we, we're in the process of doing the traffic analysis. Instead of jumping, they will make recommendations that deal with that, and we'll, we'll see how that comes back. And quite honestly, I'm not sure if there were a bubble turnaround slide anywhere at the Lowe's or not, but...
There is, there...
There is a bubble in front.
Right there. It's just, it's a problem.
No.
There's a turn.
There's a turn right there with the, the buildings that, that are in the row?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a turn right in front there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, about the, yeah, almost the middle, probably.
But that's if you're heading west, you can make a turn to head back east.
Right. But that means there's a lot here to do.
Yes.
So, you know, we've been, as residents and folks that visit Indian Trail, have been pining for this hotel for a long time, and you have a by right to build that there. Why hasn't that happened in the commercial?
I wish I could answer that.
Who can?
I will, I will raise that question to the owners and see what their timeframe is for the hotel, and see what kind of answer I get, and I'll let you know.
Because that was really leading into the next question is, how is this going to be built out? Was it going to be the hotel first, commercial?
Probably, well...
And we'll get into more details, I'm sure, as we roll.
We will, as we go. I would imagine it may be the apartments first, and the commercial maybe, and then the hotel. There again, I, I, you know, I don't tell you anything that I can't back up, so I'm going to tell you I don't have a clue, but I'll find out for you.
Anyone else? You good, Mike? Shirley? Patrick, did you want to close it?
Just a question, Tommy. You talked about four-story building and elevators?
Yes.
But you're showing gabled roofs here, so you, will you have a flat roof or will you have gabled roofs?
We, we would ask for variance on the height, but it's just these three interior units right here.
So they will have a flat roof?
No.
Gabled roof?
Yeah, we would, we would prefer to do the same look, just with an extra story top.
I, I was just trying to see what, what kind of elevator you're going to be using with the hip roof.
Shouldn't make any difference. You can put a holeless elevator in there, and it'll, there'll be a shaft, and it'll have a, it'll have a solid top on it for fire. But it'll be built inside the truss roof.
So gabled all over?
Yeah.
Okay.
So does that in, in, does that really make it a five-story then with that gabled roof? Back to Shirley's question and Marcus's request.
No, that will, that will keep it to four. That, that's considered four.
And what we did over at Copas is, instead of the roof going completely straight through, there are flat sections over the breezeways, and that's where we put all the mechanical units so they wouldn't be on the ground in view and everybody listening to them all the time. It helped with, with the noise and space.
Everybody's okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Brings us to six twenty-two. We'll take five. We'll take five. Ten fifteen years ago, a guy that robbed the bank for a dollar to get medical. Taking care is back. We're ready? At 6:30, are we live? Okay. Welcome. Welcome. This time, if everyone, please place your cellphones on vibrate, silent. And if you have to take a call, please step outside. At this time, we'd all rise. As we call the meeting to order for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time, if you've remained standing for a moment of silence, and please hold in your prayers tonight the thoughts of those affected by all the school tragedies happening around this country. And please pray that no more happen and we have a safe ending to our school year. Thank you. Everyone may be seated. This time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir. If there's no changes, I will need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
So McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? All right. And for the record, let it be on the record that Mayor Potem Cone could not make it tonight. He's away on business. We wish him safe journeys. First are our presentations for our new businesses. First is Sissy's Indian Trail Packing Post. Where are we? All right, you must be Sissy.
Yes, sir.
All right, Sissy, if you'd step up to the mic. Give us a one-minute overview of your business, and we'd like to welcome you to town.
Thank you. I just purchased Indian Trail Packing Post right here on Indian Trail Road. It's a packing center. I'm authorized FedEx Center. We do shipping, packing, notary, and all your business needs. We're open from nine to six, Monday through Friday, and nine to one on Saturdays. Thank you. And I do have pamphlets if you'd like to receive any.
Yes.
Where on Indian Trail Road?
I'm right across the street from Johnny Kay's. Everybody knows Johnny Kay.
Yes. Come on up. Sissy? This way. This way. Welcome.
Thank you.
A token of your welcome to Indian Trail. We wish you many good years of success. We're happy to have you on behalf of the council. Next up is Dr. Presley, Presley's Animal Hospital. The mic is yours, sir.
Thank you for the time. We recently moved into our new facility on 301 Chestnuts. It's a 5,000-square-foot building, full-service veterinary hospital. We do a lot of rescue work. We're also gonna have a vet farm camp this summer because every time I ask a child about chickens, they say Chick-fil-A. So, they're gonna learn about, I have baby lambs, I have chickens, I have bunnies, I have pygmy goats, horse. So, on the six acres adjoining the property that I own, we're gonna have it over there. We'll have kids from kindergarten to fifth grade in the morning and try to teach them that, what it used to be when we were kids, you know? I mean, I grew up eating fresh eggs, grew up milking a cow. My girls still do that, you know, my girls do, but nobody else does. So, but I brought some brochures. It talks about, you know, everything that we do.
Is this gonna be like a summer camp that you're gonna do weekly?
Yeah, it'll be every other week during the summer. And then it will just be for nine to 12. You'll have snacks and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Long time coming. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna yield the floor to the town manager, Patrick Sadek, for the school art program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I might yield to Susan here and there because Susan is responsible for the art program. I think she's been doing it every year. But this year, we decided to elevate it a little bit because I was so impressed. One day, I went into the room and it was full of art. And all this art is made by the students. And I love art. And if you want to see a piece of art that Patrick worked on, it's our memorial up front, so you could know where I'm coming from. So, what we did is, after I sat for an hour into that room and looking all over the arts, it was beautiful. So, I had an architect that worked with us. So, we went into a VIP room. We spent two hours there making the decision which one will be the winner. So, what we wanted to do is kinda say thank you to the artists, the students, and their teachers, and their family. And that's why we're here today. So, I'll go ahead and turn it to Susan. And we'll go ahead and call the students by name. So, what we're gonna do is, we took your painting and we framed it. We're gonna take a picture with you with the frame. We're not gonna give you that frame back because we're gonna take it and put it in our art center downstairs. So, we want everybody to look at your artwork. We're only gonna let you hold it for a few minutes, take the picture. Then we're gonna take it back away from you. Will that work? What do you think?
Sounds good. Okay. So, I'm gonna call the students up. We'll go by school. And please, if they're art educator principals, if you're here, please stand with them. We're gonna come on up with them. We'll present the children with their artwork. We want everyone in the room to, you guys will get a sneak preview of the exhibit that will be here. So, everyone will get to see the artwork frames. And then I'm just gonna ask the children, so whoever's up here with the children, just step on down. Dalton will take a picture. And then just step on down and just remain that way. And this way, we can take one group picture of Indian Trail's future artists because they're in this room. We make sure that we get their autograph every year, just in case. All right, so we'll start with Antioch. And we have, our artist is Beckett Powell. Is Beckett here? There he is. Beckett is in the third grade. And Christine Kazaya, sorry, Ms. Kazaya, come on up. Whatever your life, whatever's.
Let's go with Beckett.
There you go. What do you think? What do you think of it in the frame?
Do you have a quick picture?
So, if I can ask one question. What we're seeing on the screen is the actual artwork.
Oh, yes, actually, that's Beckett's artwork right there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we want to make sure everybody can see it. This is the fifth year that we held this exhibit. We started with, I think, five schools and 70 pieces. And this year, I'm proud to say, we had 11 schools. And I want, it was 170 pieces of artwork that we displayed.
Congratulations, Beckett.
Next, we'll have Hemby Bridge. So, Skylar Austin. Did we see Skylar? There we go. And Caitlin Murray. There's Caitlin, okay. And Savannah. Savannah girl, did Savannah make it tonight? No? Okay. Well, we'll hold on to Savannah's, obviously. Yes, sir.
Do you want the teachers and/or parents to stay up there with the kids? Or do you want them out of the picture?
Yeah, they can, yeah. Yeah, let them stay with them. Yeah, the teachers, yep. That'd be great, okay.
The teachers. I guess you're a teacher by default. The little one. You're already qualified.
Caitlin is in heaven there. Yeah, so we had some 3D artwork as well. Without you, we wouldn't have this. Okay, that's Hemby Bridge. Now, we will do Indian Trail. So, Anu Sabu, is she here? There we go. Nope, this one. There we go. There you go. What do you think? It's beautiful. And does a teacher come up here with her? Let's see. Yeah, Ms. Miller. I didn't, she's not here. Come on up. We'll have her parent come up. Here we go. Give ours a two again. There you go. Metroline Christian Academy, Parker Gordon. Did I see Parker? There we go. Hey, Parker, come on up. And Lynn Barry is with us. And Rick Calaway, our principal, fantastic. There you go, Parker. Okay, Poplin Elementary, we have Aubrey Davis. There you are. Don't be shy, Aubrey, come on up. And I don't, did I see Shannon, Ms. Helms? I don't think I saw Ms. Helms, yeah.
We spent half an hour looking at this one.
He did. Aubrey, take your certificate too, okay? Okay. Porter Ridge, we have Sophia Rivera. Where's little Sophia? Come on, Sophia. This is Sophia. There we go. Wait, wait, Sophia, let's give you a certificate, okay? Okay. And Ms. Nichols, okay. And do you want to wait? And then we have Grace Truong. Is Grace here? Come on up, Grace. Grace also did a 3D piece. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, here you go, Grace. Where are you, sweetie? Oh, I knew it was a 3D piece, I'm sorry. There you go, sweetheart. You want to know? I'm gonna tell you because I look at that all the time and think for sure it's a fifth grader. So, that's why we were thrown off again. Second grade, we keep doing that. And Daniella.
You're kidding.
Yeah, come on up.
I've never dreamed.
You haven't? Oh, yes. Definitely a favorite. Hold that one up, Daniella. So, that's also a ceramic piece. Okay. Now, we have Sardis. Is Brooklyn in the house? I have to say that, I'm a New Yorker. Is there Brooklyn in the house? Woo, woo, woo! No? All right, there's Long Island in the house. Okay. Is Haley here? Is Ms. Griffith here? No, okay. Well, we'll hold on to hers for her. From Shiloh, Johanna Huerta. With Ms. Baucham. We got it, we got it. We're still very overwhelmed by the artwork. And Sun Valley, we have Charity Hinton. Oh, I guess Charity's here. Charity brought her fan club. Come on up, Charity. Is Riley here? Our teacher's not here, so I'll have Dad come up with you. Get your certificate and Dad will come up with you. Okay. And Union Preparatory Academy of Indian Trail, April Helms. And I saw little Ms. April. Here she comes. And that's April Grace Helms, right? There we go. And Alicia, look at, there she is. All right. We'll get a group shot. Okay. Do you want to go up there with them and take a group photo and? So again, we give you its future artists. IT, dum dum. Dalton, you're gonna have to pan. Congratulations, everybody.
What?
I want you to say a few words. As I'm not reading, please say a few words.
Before all of you leave, artists, parents, and teachers, if we can have your attention for a moment. We, on behalf of the council, we'd like to say thank you for participating in the art program. It's certainly a pleasure and an honor to see these young artists year after year and for the innovative thinking of our town manager to have some of these artworks portrayed year-round in Town Hall. And it certainly warms the heart to see that the arts is still flourishing and growing. And each piece was very unique and absolutely wonderful. Thank you again. Where is it? Kathy, do we have the proclamation in here somewhere?
At least you can look to the kids and go, there's hope.
If I would hand you my phone. Just leave that one in there. I'll get that as soon as I can. We'll give them a moment to read.
But thank you, Michael. That's a holt. And caring. I'm glad you like it. A holt for an owl will just have, you'll have a blast of feathers.
At this time, we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week that will be written to record. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital—of vital importance to the sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Indian Trail. Whereas, the infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedication, efforts of public works professionals who are engaged— who are engineers, excuse me, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our town's streets, sidewalks, buildings, parks, streetlights, stormwater, and solid waste collections. Whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Indian Trail to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel within the public works department is materially influenced by the citizens' attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Whereas, the year 2019 marks the 59th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Whereas, this year marks the town's 3rd year commemorating the National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association with the theme that it starts here. Speaking to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. And now therefore, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim May 19, 2019 through May 25, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the town of Indian Trail and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Given under my hand and seal of the town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, and its 14th day of May, 2019. Okay. All right, this time I'll open up the public comments. And remind everybody, thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to 3 minutes per speaker and may not give your 3 minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or the council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, respectfully request that prior to airing the grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we respect the town employees' rights to a fair hearing on—of your grievance. When you step to the podium, state your name. Your 3 minutes will begin. First, Ms. Linda Avery.
Good evening, Mayor Alvarez and Town Council members. I am Linda Avery. I live at 324 Braxton Drive in the Brandon Oaks Development. And with me this evening are a number of residents from Braxton Drive and Ellsbury Lane. And we would like to know the town's plans for completing the work on the median at the entrance to our street.
May I interrupt for one moment? And that'll stop her time. It can begin. Are all 3 of you here speaking on the same subject?
Yes.
If you will all step up as per the meeting, it's the same subject. If you all stand together with one person being your speaker. Excuse me for one minute. That's my mother.
Go ahead. You can continue. Sorry, he had to take a call. You can continue.
Okay. Is the town planning to pave over the area where a portion of the median is already removed? Or is there a plan to return the median to its original longer length? Another resident, Beverly McKay and myself—and this is Beverly behind me here—have gone door-to-door getting input from residents of the 2 affected streets. And the residents in our area overwhelmingly favor leaving the median at the shorter length and asphalting over the bare area. The shorter median is preferred to allow access to driveways of the homes that are nearest to the entrance and will improve the flow of traffic and safety so the street will not be blocked if there are delivery trucks, garbage trucks, or emergency vehicles stopped in front of these homes. A resident living in the first house on the street experienced a serious consequence of the longer median when it was in place, and her driveway was blocked. She had called the ambulance for a medical emergency of a family member. The fire trucks—excuse me—the fire trucks arrived first, and then the ambulance could not get around them to quickly transport the family member to the emergency room. Also, large vehicles like school buses have had a hard time navigating the small passageway by the longer median. And we do have 4 or 5 school buses that travel our streets twice daily. I would like to direct your attention to a letter that I have here supporting the shorter median, which was sent to the town council previously in April. This letter states that residents are glad that half the median is now gone and would like for the project to be completed with repaving and replacing the curving. It is also noted that this letter was signed by 50 residents, and there are a total of 38 homes on our 2 streets. And could the residents of Braxton Drive and Ellsbury Lane, who are here this evening in support of repaving the area where the median was removed, please stand. These are the people most affected by the street design since they navigate this street every time they go and come from their homes. And of course, this is just a few of our residents here.
The 3 minutes is up. Can they leave the letter?
Yes. Did you say you emailed it to Town Council?
I actually brought it here in person and left it at the desk back in April, but I do have a copy of it. And I just highlighted the area—the letter was about several things, but I highlighted the area in the letter that the community members are glad now that the median is gone, and they would like to request the repaving and the recurbing of that area.
Are you okay with leaving the letter with council?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. And for the record, if the 2 of you adjust, state your names into the microphone that you were with her.
Good evening. My name is Bev McKay, and I appreciate your time listening to our—
Thank you.
—big concern. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is Greg Cramis, also of Braxton Drive.
Thank you. That brings us to Jim White. Good evening, Mr. White.
My name is Jim White. 1815 Green Tree Lane. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, Mr. Town Manager. I stand before you tonight in opposition of House Bill 971, modernization and privatization. 10 years ago, Indian Trail had a referendum on the ballot to open an ABC store and for liquor by the drink. After strenuous debate, the referendum did narrowly pass. The citizens of Indian Trail did not vote for up to 1,500 retail outlets to sell alcohol in Indian Trail. Nor did they vote to have alcohol sales from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The bill also calls for, by January 1, 2020, requires local ABC boards to liquidate all assets by public sale to the highest bidder. The 168 local ABC boards operate 433 stores statewide and employs over 2,870 people. 16 of those people—16 of those employees worked for our local ABC store, which means they might lose their job and livelihood. Since the opening of the ABC store in 2010, the store has distributed $1,044,346 to the town of Indian Trail to spend as they deem necessary. This also helps the citizens keeping our—the tax rate low that we currently enjoy. If this bill passes, the town of Indian Trail will lose this revenue stream. I hope you will join me in opposing House Bill 971. I was also expecting a resolution to be on the agenda tonight for Town Council to consider in support of the ABC system. I don't see it on the agenda. I'll assume it—we'll get there sooner or later. But I do support that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Remember—
Mr. White.
There is no—
3 minutes is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Council comments on the rebuttal? Anybody have any questions? Patrick? I do recall seeing an email to add that to the agenda. Was it...
Yeah, no.
No?
No. That one was tabled.
That one was tabled? Okay. Also, and I just have a comment on the first speakers. I don't live there. I've not been down the street. It appears that there's a lot of people that don't like that median, and Chase would probably be the best one to get answers to the town. If we could find out from public safety officials if the median does impede their ability to get to homes. Because then that would be a real concern.
I have a few comments, if I may.
Yes.
The first comment is, we've been told that HOA was not in support of cutting the median down. They wanted the median to be installed as it was. The second item, we worked very closely with Union County Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department to investigate the site. And according to both of them, we did not receive any comment in regard that the island is restricting ambulances to schools or buses or anything like that. So I just want to share that with council. But again, we did receive a comment from one of the HOA members that HOA is not in support of removing part of the island. They would like to see it back as it was. And we should be receiving a letter from them soon. This is what I've been told. We have not received that letter yet.
Okay. You will keep us updated on that?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
If you can see him after. Okay, Mr. Morse?
Yes, I'm very sympathetic to y'all's situation over there. But it does sound like it really is that you need to work through the HOA first. There's a lot of things in life that frustrate me, and Super Street is one of them, and I'd like to take some matters in my own hands and go out there and do it. But it'll have consequences, and so I just caution everyone to just be reasonable in your decisions when you approach these problems. You do have a council that is willing to work. The problem, again, you know, we don't want to open up a—or set of precedents where there's a problem for every HOA, and then the town taxpayers have to take care of that. But I'm sure the town will be willing to work with you guys. And again, I'm very sympathetic to this situation that's—I think is spiraled downward quickly. So, and Patrick, yes, about the HOA letter. Do we have that actual in hand, or is that just through word of mouth?
It's forthcoming. I have not received it yet.
Okay. I'm going to refrain any more comments.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I look forward to seeing that letter as well. At this time, I will close the public comments and move us on to Captain Cobal. If I'm not mistaken, Captain Cobal, this is Law Enforcement Week.
I think so. I do know Public Works Week is coming up.
I know. I know. That would be my error that we didn't get a proclamation in time for Law Enforcement Week. But at this time, while the captain's up there, it's better than a proclamation. Let's all give our law enforcement officials a round of applause.
Listen, I get to come over here and take credit for these guys, but I'll be honest with you. I can speak for them in this. We work in the best place ever. We like working for Indian Trail. We like working for our residents. Here in Union County, we've got the best job ever because it's no good when you come to work and don't want to work for the people that you're working for. We enjoy working for the people that we work for. So we've got the best job ever. We—proclamation or not, we're happy to come to work every day.
I think I could speak for the council in saying there are no words to show our appreciation for what law enforcement, including yourselves, do every day. And Chase, you downplay what you do. But we know if tragedy strikes, you're going to be right there in the middle of it. You can't deny that. Putting your lives on the line and in a day and age where law enforcement's very underappreciated, we'd like to set the precedent where we overappreciate you. And I don't think we can ever do that enough. Thank you very much.
Just don't bring doughnuts. So we're involved in a weight loss competition.
I can eat them by myself.
All right. So I've laid out a couple of things up there for you guys to look over, and I'm just going to hit the highlights on it for everybody. But back on March 29, on a Saturday morning, early in the morning, we had a armed robbery that occurred at the Aldi's Grocery Store. You probably remember us talking about that. So in working on that, we discovered and figured out pretty quickly that there had been other jurisdictions that had Aldi Grocery Store robberies that were very similar in nature. And so our investigators came out that day, started canvassing the area, and Tyler Kao, one of our detectives, actually did a little bit of extra legwork and started going around the surrounding businesses, even just outside the immediate area. And Tyler was able to find our suspect vehicle at another location here in Indian Trail that provided a whole lot better view of the vehicle than what we had from the initial cameras. And so we joined forces with Fayetteville, Lexington, Kernersville, Rocky Mount Police Departments in investigating a series of these robberies that occurred. And during that, then, we figured out that we had an ex-employee, a guy that owned a company that had been doing some cleaning under contract for Aldi's, and that had ended. And he lives just outside of Raleigh and Wendell, North Carolina. And so we were able to get some phone records and put him in our area on the day of the offense and also put him in the area of the other robberies. So we got some Wake County involved in it. And long and short, through the cooperation of a bunch of different agencies, we did a search warrant last week on his property up in Wendell, North Carolina, and recovered some items from some of these robberies and also recovered the items that he was wearing and also confirmed that his license plate on the front of the vehicle that we had seen, the vanity plate that we had seen on our footage down here from another local Indian Trail business, was the exact license plate that was on the front of that car that had stayed hidden in his garage. So good work for all these officers. A lot of hard work and a lot of legwork, but they had done a lot of surveillance on this guy. And so anyway, he got picked up and arrested and is currently in Wake County Jail, up there waiting on his charges to come forth with. But he'll be coming down here to Union County. And I just think it was a good work on all of those guys' parts because I wanted to run back over here, week after week, and say, "We're that close. We're that close. We're that close." But they were very patient, and they put together a real good case on him. We did—a just to catch you guys up, we did—past several weeks, a lot of our guys have been going down to our training facility outside of Wingate, doing some active threat training and also some manhunt training. Some of our instructors incorporated manhunt techniques and stuff after our Verizon store robbery that we had up here last fall, where we wound up over in a very rural area with a whole bunch of people and a whole bunch of acreage and a whole lot of swamp land trying to get through to get those 2 guys. And so we took back some lessons, learned from that after we debriefed from it, identified some things that we wanted to work on. So we—over the past few weeks, we've been working on that. And on Friday, I attended myself, one of the last days that we had available, and got to get out in the woods and the chiggers and in the creek out there and walk around. And the good thing about that is we subjected all our guys to ammunition rounds. So if you don't know what that is, it's a handgun that functions and a round that cycles through just like a real bullet would, except it shoots out a little hard-tipped chalk piece that really stings and hurts and leaves a mark on you if you get pelted with it. So we had some good guys out there. I say good guys. We had good guys acting like bad guys out in the woods and out in the weeds out there hiding, and we'd have to go through and use some good safety techniques that hopefully will keep our people safe. keep our people safe whenever we're out there in the woods in the future having to deal with it. But just thought that was interesting that one of our cases from here in town actually led to us developing a training exercise off of it. We conducted some town staff training last week as well. I put a note in there about it. We covered, I pretty much think, every town employee, Patrick, made it through to that. Tony Underwood from our office, and John Aldrich, our attorney, came up. Karen was here, and so we touched base on some trends going around that some of our local government employees are starting to see already and see it across the country. And so it was just kind of a heads-up type trainer. Once we started experiencing some stuff like that around here, we realized real quickly that town staff, they're really not as a program or a training exercise for them on that. So we just kind of augmented what we get from a law enforcement perspective and gave it to town staff. And you guys will probably get that during the closed session. I'll condense it down to eight or 10 minutes in the future. The last page there has just got a picture of some heroin that was recovered from the rooftop of one of our local businesses last week, or actually, it was Wednesday before last. But the narcotics guys were up here doing an operation. They brought in guys from all over the county, and even a couple from outside the county. Did some interdiction work here in Indian Trail, just kind of made a sweep across Union County, hitting some of our areas that are known for trafficking and known for arrest in the past. We've talked about before, a lot of our big box stores and a lot of our big parking lots are where, you know, people want to meet up to do narcotics transactions at. So they were doing some surveillance, saw a gentleman that fit the MO for what he was doing, just kind of lord around, hanging in the parking lot, and wasn't really doing any business at any of our shops. So they went up to make a voluntary contact and approach with him. At that time, he decided to take off running a chunk of package on top of the business. It didn't pan out well, too well for him. But if you look at the pictures there, it's got all of those colorful things, they're not bubble gum candy, that look like what you get out of the quarter machine. Those are actually packets of heroin, and then some cash and some other paraphernalia and stuff that was in there with it. But thought that was really good and got some good help from Stallings Fire Department, but ended up arresting Deshaun Anderson, 23 years old, of Charlotte. And he faces numerous charges for the narcotics that he had on him that day. So good proactive work that those guys were doing out here from the narcotics. Those guys are undercover and in plain clothes, out here working a lot. Patrick, seeing them around several times, and sometimes, Patrick, for me, we just happen to stumble upon them sometimes. And who's that? Well, those guys work up here, too. So they're out here flipping rocks and keeping out in the places that we shop and where our families shop at. So just wanted to make you guys aware that they were out here and some of the things they were getting into. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job on the arrests, by the way.
Good job. Before we move on to the next item, I saw my paperwork here was dropped off, that letter that was handed to you earlier, along with the signatures from the residents. I'm going to place that into the folder for public record. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made a motion to approve. All in favor? That would be unanimous. That brings us to public hearing. Our, 8-8, continued public hearing from 4:23 meeting. CZ 2018011 Harper's Run. That would be, it says here, Mr. Jones. Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, counsel. I think the developers here, are you going to be presenting? Yeah? I was going to let them run through their slides, and then I'll take it from there.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for consideration, counsel and everyone. My name's Willie Morris. I'm the land acquisition manager for MI Homes in Charlotte. This is for the Harper's Run Town Home Development on Chestnut Lane. Just real quick about MI. We are a national home builder. We're a family-owned company, but publicly traded, but still kind of on the small range compared to the, you know, the other national builders in town. We operate in about 15 markets in the Midwest and the Atlantic, Florida and Texas. Here in Charlotte, we have developments kind of all over each corner of town, from Mooresville down to Lancaster County, out into Belmont, and here in Indian Trail. We're operating about 15 communities right now with several more coming online. I first started speaking to Scott Vickery, the landowner, about a year ago about this property. And we thought that townhomes would be a good use here. We know that there's a lot of apartments coming online in Charlotte in general, but also in Indian Trail. And we thought that something a little less dense and a little less impactful might work. So that led Scott to me and kind of led us together to pursuing this. The townhomes we're building are on the low end, about 1,400 square feet, will probably be about $225,000. The bigger units on the end, about 1,850 square feet, and probably pushing into the high $200,000 range. One and two car garage options. The in-units have two car garages. The doors to those are around the side, you'll have a little side entry door. So a couple of the reasons we really like this development, very close to the neighborhood services up at Chestnut. We know that there's a lot of concern about Old Monroe and the improvements coming there and traffic congestion in the immediate area and in Indian Trail in general. I'm going to let Scott speak to some of that. He's very, he lives around the corner and can give you a very good rundown of how we see that improving, not only in addition to the improvements to Old Monroe, but up at the interchange at Weddington Road and 485, or the new interchange at Weddington Road and 485, in addition to a couple of other things. So millennials are finally buying homes, but we and other developers are having a hard time producing product that they can afford. And one of the ways to get to a price point that a new home buyer can afford is by developing a townhome. A little bit smaller, a little bit more efficient, and it seems to be working very well. So that is the idea behind this. Our price points here should be, you know, if a potential homeowner is weighing a rent payment versus a mortgage payment in one of our townhomes, it should be very similar, especially with escalating rents in today's market. We also, we want to avoid having renters in our community. We have a policy at MI internal that we don't allow any more than two investor buyers in the community at any one time. So no investor group, no LLC can come in and buy 50 units and then just start renting them out. We only allow two. So that's one, that's one way that we allay that concern. Just real quickly, the location, as y'all can all see, it's almost at the intersection of Old Monroe and Chestnut. It's about 18 acres. Our site plan that we have finally arrived on after nine months of changes, probably. We had to work pretty closely with DOT. I'll let Chris Todd, our engineer, speak to that with any technical questions you have. But we had to adjust our entrances several times to accommodate their requirements. So what you see here is what everyone has agreed upon as acceptable, especially DOT. So now we have, we have an entrance down at the property line that's right in, right out, and then a full service entrance in the middle of the site. Again, any questions on that, I'm going to direct to my colleague, Chris Todd. This is just the in-unit. This is a floor plan that we're working with right now, subject to change a little bit. But this is the two-car garage big unit. I just want to give you an idea where you see the entry on the side and the various options of bedrooms and whatnot. Again, elevations, we're committing to no, just hardy plank, stone and brick, no vinyl, obviously. We will try to mix up, I know the idea is to mix up, you know, each unit as much as we can per the demand from our buyers. We'll do a lick and stick wrap around the foundation, which will, you know, give that kind of brick or stone look of a raised foundation. But we're pretty excited about this product. I think it'll do well here. These are some other entrances that we have in other neighborhoods in Charlotte. Because of the location of the pond, the stormwater pond in this community at the front, we're going to have to spend a lot of time and money on dressing that up. And so we, you know, obviously, it's in our best interest to have a very dressed up front door. We expect to spend a decent amount of money on that. But anyway, this is representative of what we typically do at our entrances. And that's it for right now. Let Tim go, and then we'll be here to answer any questions.
So let me go back to the, to the plan. So this is a request to rezone approximately 18.583 acres from single-family, low-density residential to conditional zoning. The intent of this request is to allow the townhomes, and the subject properties are located west of Old Monroe Road, north of Chestnut Lane. Just to reiterate, the planning board voted to five to two to recommend the rezoning. So now we are, if you have any questions, and then the proposed action.
Public comments. Before we get to council comments or questions, we're going to open up the public comments. Same rules apply, you're limited to three minutes. Will Presley?
So I own pretty much everything on the other side of the road. My business is there. I own the other four and a half acres, and I own the six acres adjoining Old Monroe Road. So being a business owner, and they've worked very close with me to make sure that my people can come in and out. They've moved the entrance down away from my entrance, so there's no flow issues in my business. So, and I think it's going to be a good product because I have a lot of millennials that love their animals. So it's, it's good for me because they'll be, with townhomes, they're going to have to have a place to put their animals. So that's me, right across the street. So it's a good marriage of, you know, business and, you know, and you guys were very welcoming for me to come across the street. I have no intention of doing anything with the property across the street, other than use it for a camp this summer for the kids, which if they move into the townhomes, it'll be a camp that'll run for years and years. So I think it's, I mean, all told, I think I own 13 and a half acres across the street. So I guess I'm the largest landowner other than Mr. Vickery on Chestnut Lane. So that being said, I'm for the project, you know? I think it would be great. I know we're worried about congestion on Chestnut. You know, I think putting the development there is going to save lives because they, people come off Old Monroe and they drop the hammer coming by my office at 50 miles an hour. So I think we put a development here, we're going to get people to slow down and maybe save lives because, you know, we've had accidents down at the other end of Chestnut. It's just a matter of time for somebody's going to come over that hill and careen right into one of my clients and hurt them. And then because they come right off the hill, and they're coming down fast. So we've actually put something up there, slow for children, you know, try to get them to realize, hey, it's only 35, you know? So, I mean, I've asked Union County Police Department to come out there and say, hey, just put somebody out here a couple of days just to slow them down. Because we've had kids that race on that road. It's dangerous. And I think putting this development there will hopefully slow them down. And, you know, plus, when we move Chestnut and develop Old Monroe, we're going to have a great flow. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Presley. Leah Crum? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Good evening. My name's Leah Crum, and I live at 205 Allison Drive. And our property will back up to the back part of this community. And I'm here again tonight to, on behalf of the residents of Allison Drive, as a reminder of our opposition to the rezoning of the Harper's Run community. I told my children when I left this evening, you can't complain if you don't voice your opinion right. So here I am again. Just like last month's town council meeting I attended, I got on the town's website to prepare and see there's yet another proposed community with 274 units at Fincher and Potter's Road. This one would also be within three miles of Harper's Run, which is proposed to have 116 townhomes, the additional 15 townhomes at Park Meadows on Old Monroe Road. And then last month's proposed community that I saw, Village at Potter, which is proposed to have 65 townhomes. So I just think that the Potter's Road, Chestnut Lane, Old Monroe area is already congested enough in all these townhome communities within, like I said, three miles of each other. What do we, this, everybody says the super street's going to relieve some of this congestion, but what are we to do while everything is being constructed at the same time? I just think the town needs to slow down and take some time for all the streets to catch up to all these communities that we want to put. He mentioned, and also at the planning board meeting, another resident mentioned that this was a dangerous area of Chestnut Lane, where just as he said, people fly up and down. And at that time, some of the entrances were in a bad visibility area. Some of the other concerns that I have expressed is the stormwater runoff. And I know that they've said that their, all their water will go to their retention pond, but that's a concern of ours. And also just the quality of life of having 116 townhomes in my backyard. We don't really care for that. Once we can navigate the maze of Old Monroe Road and get back to our homes, we like to have the woods where the deers run and fields back there behind us and not 116 townhomes in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Vickery here? Scott? Before I close public comments, did you want three minutes to say something, since this is your project?
Sure. And thank you all for your consideration tonight. And thank everybody, from staff to developers and engineers, for working through this. Everybody's been very kind, and we've tried to take public comment and staff comment into consideration. And we feel like we've come up with a very good product for this area. I understand the deer in the woods, things like that, but the deer don't pay taxes. And open land around here, people are aging. Mr. Fossey, his family's owned this land for 100 years. He's 70 years old. His only daughter lives in Kentucky. And, you know, there goes life. That's not atypical. That's just the way it happens. And if she inherited it, what would she do with it? You just can't do nothing with land. You've got to do something, and highest and best use with the community taken into consideration. I feel like that's what we've got here. We've got a good product that is in demand. We've tried to look at surrounding similar projects and try to extract from those of what they did right and what they could have done better. And that's what we've tried to add to this, and I feel like we've done a good job. The different iterations that we've had, DOT being the main driver of that. And I feel like this is going to be a very pleasant look along Chestnut. It's going to be very complimentary. Dr. Presley has spoken, you know, about shifting the entrance and whatnot. This design will have a left turn lane coming from Monroe Road on Chestnut into his project. That's going to be a huge safety bonus. I mean, there's where, you know, any rub lies about somebody stopping to do a left-hand turn and they come in. If everybody's 135 mile an hour, everything's usually okay. But the one that's not, we've got the turning lane, the D cell and turn there, and then, you know, the D cell lane to go right in that full motion center entrance there. So I feel like this is definitely a refined product from anything that we've had prior. They were good, but taking people's comments and, you know, looking at them, sometimes time brings on, you know, a better product in the end. I feel like that's what we've got, and I feel like this is going to be very complimentary to Chestnut Lane. If there's any questions I can ask for, I'd be happy to, and I thank you all for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Vickery or the other representative by the council? I know you, no? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Jones, you're back up.
So there's no other discussion item? So, there's no other discussion items. I think the first thing up is the proposed DDO amendment is, you know, the consistency and reasonableness statement, if.
Is there a slide for that?
I don't have a slide in this mix. It was in the previous ceremony.
Okay.
The previous hearing that we started.
I'll take care of that when it comes to it.
But I do have a, some notes on that if someone wants to look at it.
I've got that. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Does council have any discussion amongst council?
That I do.
Mr. Morris, you're up.
First off.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, sir.
I need to close the public comments portion of the hearing. Okay, Mr. Morris, you're up.
I'm back. First off, this, this project, I've been aware of it since being on council. And I know there is some, some folks out there that talk about these illegal developer meetings with council and the whatnot. But the truth be known is that myself and another council member met with these developers on a couple of occasions now and have provided some input to them. And the one thing I do want to say that I appreciate is that they have earnestly taken our comments and our, our concerns. And they've, they've listened and they've incorporated into the design. Some of the things that I was concerned with, with riding around on our neighborhood streets and them collapsing is the hardening of the cul-de-sacs. And they've done that. There was, I do have a question. Is this a hundred and eight or a hundred and sixteen units?
One hundred and eight.
One hundred and eight, okay.
One hundred and nine.
One hundred and nine. So, that has come back down from one sixteen. The buffer that was, the fifty-foot buffer has been increased again. It was a smaller buffer, so there's some protection afforded to the neighbors. I do have concern somewhat of the Monroe Road is if it'll ever get done, or I should say, when will it ever get done? But, and I do have some concerns on the flooding around the adjacent neighborhoods. So, one of the things I was looking at after we've had discussions and this has been presented, and I could not remember from the topographical map that we had before, they showed the flow of the water. So, you know, you've been, you've been working with this. And if it's determined, say this, this one little corner right up here, and I can't remember, is this where the water flows?
Mr. Sadik, there may be another slide. Mr. Sadik.
Is there another slide?
Mr. Sadik, there may be another slide on that. It's right there, that one.
Yes, it's showing right there. Okay. So, you know, we're, we're hearing from residents that's directly behind this proposed development as well as from Mr. Presley across the road. So, Mr. Presley's not going to be impacted by the, any of the storm drainage. However, those neighbors on Allison Drive very well may be, but could, could be. Have you all given any consideration, instead of having that BMP, that one BMP up here, doing something in that back corner to mitigate any potential complaints or, or really the flooding, any stormwater issues back there? So, instead of a hundred and eight, would you consider ninety? I think that's eighteen units back in there. And so, so that you have some green area for stormwater. Question slash comment? With the two concerns that I have, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on this at this point. It's a tough one. Sure. But council, that's a couple of months.
Hi, I'm Chris I with Timmons Group. We're at six ten East Morehead Street, Suite 250 Charlotte. We've known about this concern from really one of their very first meetings. So, we put together this topographic map. And what I can show you is, and I assume you have this on your monitor too, but, so, I believe. You live somewhere right in here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, I come down to the cul-de-sac a little bit.
Right here. So, that's the cul-de-sac right there. And what doesn't show real well, I guess, up on the screen, is we drew a drainage area to figure out, per the topography, what is the land area that's currently flowing to the cul-de-sac? And it goes up like this, and it goes up to this industrial development across the street and then back down like that. The area in yellow is our site. Our site's drainage area come down along Chestnut and it goes up like this, back up to the industrial area. There's a, basically a ridge line that breaks it, and so it kind of does like this. So, the only drainage area that this cul-de-sac or these homes will see from our site will be that little piece right there and that corner right there. We will be taking that drainage area to the pond. So, we've actually spent a reasonable amount of time looking at your drainage and the map to see, you know, we were curious too why you were experiencing what you're experiencing. These couple of homes right here, the topo really gets narrow. It, it generally creates a sway. It's kind of very, what we call sheet flow, very constant as it, as it kind of comes along here. But about right here, it kind of basically channelizes to the point where it's bringing it right to these couple of homes. These, you know, this development here, I'm sure this has been here a long time. There's, there's no sort of detention anywhere in this entire drainage area that we can see. So, what, what I can very confidently say is that our drainage will have no impact to Allison Woods where it would impact potentially, again, our pond is kind of here. We're detaining water, but we will be outletting it here. There's a, there's a, basically a culvert that goes under Allison Woods that may or may not be undersized, that goes into a ditch on the other side, then down along this property line, it basically empties out, goes under Chestnut, and then it just keeps on going. So, our water leaving our site will long go into the ditch line and then fall out where this other water is going. We, we've spent actually a lot of time looking at this. That's the answer on the stormwater.
Anyone else have a question?
I was the other council person that Jerry was, was mentioning. And this goes back to kind of what we did as we first got started was that two of us would get together and, and visit with developers so that, that we could really sit down, look at the topographical map, look at a bigger map. We had, we had a lot more input and a lot more information to look at. And as Jerry said, we talked about buffers. We, it was, it was a mutual thing. It was a give and a take. I think that we came up with, with a very good proposal here. And I'm, I'm glad you, I do remember that conversation of how the drainage worked. And the drainage is really not affected anything other than yourself and it comes out. So, you know, to me, this was the way that we should be working with the developers is to really sit down, talk about it, get our input, what we felt was best for the residents. And then, again, the, the big thing that I remember is we did talk a lot about the drainage. And I do remember that conversation perfectly. So, I would be in favor of it because I don't, I don't think it affects anyone from a, from a drainage standpoint.
I have a question. There's a triangle which is this hill. This is just open space? What is that?
Yes, it'll, it'll be just be open space. We'll probably have some sort of programming in there, but to be determined. But the main kind of park area is down where, where mailboxes would be down in front of the community. That'll be.
Which would be around here?
Yeah, that'll be the programmed area. The one up that you pointed to will be open space, maybe with some park benches or a dog park or something like that.
And if the council were to grant you approval on this, when, when would you guys see this actually begin in construction once you get your plans in? And how long you think it'd take to kind of get this complete?
My guess is we would begin development in the first quarter of next year. And then that would probably take ten to twelve months. And then, so, first, first homes being constructed in the first quarter of 2021. And it's probably a three-year project, a three-year build-out.
All right.
Whoever can answer this question? Scott? And probably I'll, I can direct this to you, Scott. So, you begin construction and it's moving along. And you notice possible flooding issues down the road? Or even right after completion, a big rainstorm because we know the last two years here has been pretty steady rain. And you start to see something change, which is where we've had a lot of problems. We've inherited flooding all over this county and town from just developers, just like what Chase would call smash and grab out of a store, just build, go. And then we're stuck holding, holding it in our hands. What reassurance can you give that if some topography changes, which can happen, if our flooding starts to happen, whether during construction or within a year or so after when it starts to get noticed, that you'll make good on it rather than leaving the rest of the Indian Trail taxpayer to flip the bill and people adjourning the property having issues with more water?
Sure. I guess firstly, I'd like to say that, I mean, it's less than a couple percent that currently is not cheating back to where the proposed pond is. We're going to capture that. So, that will be water that's not going toward Allison. That, that's water that Mother Nature is sending that way that we're going to capture and put in that pond. So, that's, that's one thing. We don't have the resources or the right to go to Allison.
No, that's understood, that's understood.
Yes, sir. To, to the engineer's point, you know, it may be something that the town can look at publicly works. It may be something as simple as a pipe or two that's either, I rode down there yesterday and I noticed a pipe or two, not at the end of the road, but going down through it, that's just covered in water. So, when it rains, that water's jumping somebody's driveway. And it may just be, you know, maintenance may help a lot.
I'm strictly talking about.
When it rains ten inches.
Right, I'm, no, I'm, you, acts of God, the thousand-year floods. I'm strictly talking about anything caused by the construction.
On this stuff, the, the developer, obviously he's got a very capable engineering group and then they are bonded and whatnot. And some of these bonds literally go on forever. You know, and there'll be temporary stormwater and then it'll, you know, convert into this, this permanent, what will be an amenity. So, it's not just going to be, you know, some, some detention ponds are literally holes in the ground and they do their job and whatnot. But I think Willie spoke to it a little bit ago. This is going to be front and center on Chestnut, one, which concerns me and I want it to be nice. But two, it's a, it's a sales tool for them. It's a, it's a, it's an entrance feature. And so, they're going to do, for their self-interest, they're going to do the best they can with that pond and amenitize it and whatnot. And, you know, I, I think the town has maybe in years past not had the, the regulations, maybe the, the arms to do it. But, you know, in the last number of years, stormwater's gotten more stringent, Raleigh's gotten more stringent. You all are more aware of it and whatnot. And I think the product that all developers are putting out now is far superior to what we've seen. One, going from neighborhoods that didn't have it at all, two, some that may or may not work, to now that, you know, they're, they're very scrutinized going in and then maintained and whatnot. And a project that they're doing now at Austin Village, monthly, a Raleigh engineer comes by, inspects it, sends us out a report. If there's any concerns or whatnot, they get those addressed. They, they have their.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of checks and balances.
On a side note, your family has more than a above-average track record with what you build. Nothing is less than A positive. To quote your mom, you have to raise the bar.
Yes, sir.
I strongly believe in my heart that you're not going to run away from any issues that might arise down the road for many, many reasons.
We've got more development to come in time. I know that you all have gotten a lot of things that are solidified, thrown in front of you in the last year or two. I know you've got a lot of blue sky stuff coming at you. Part of that's what we get for living in a great place. Other people want to live here. It would be nice to be greedy, but other people want to come here. And you're going to keep seeing stuff like that. But if you all, in my experience with this, if you all do as good a job of vetting things out as we've done here and you've got groups like this that are willing to bend and contort to, to get the best product that we can, then I think you and you girls will be fine.
Well, based off of what you presented here and your willingness to contort and bend, and honestly, the fact that the track record over many, many years that your family has brought to this town, I would be in favor of this. Anyone else? Mr. Morris?
Patrick, this is for you.
Glad, sir.
Have, have we, have, has the town been out there to evaluate those culverts and the whatnot around Allison Drive that is presently experienced some, some issues?
Yeah, I turn it to Adam and we do have a spreadsheet that we keep up with all troubling areas within the town. Adam, do you have any requests for Allison's Drive?
Right now, we don't have any on the books. Now, Allison Drive is a DOT road. So, in that case, we would work with them as much as we could to do anything out there.
Even for a stormwater abatement that's DOT?
Yeah. I mean, if they own the road, that's why we try not to take many roadways away from them under the town's maintenance because we want to make sure that their storm drainage is working too. So, that's sometimes why we don't accept the streets from them. We can't take it if they have a storm drainage issue. Otherwise, we'll be ending up fixing the storm drainage system for them. But we do respond. Most of the time, we get the call and then we route it to DOT.
So, if I'm hearing this correctly, if you had a rash of Allison Drive residents complaining about floodwater, then something would happen?
Yeah, all the time. But it could be a possibility that the, the pipe is under design. During the last hurricane that we had, most of the flooded areas, we kind of, we could determine that those pipes, they're under designed. They've been out there for about thirty, forty, fifty years. So, our storm drainage ordinance right now, and the state's storm drainage ordinance is much stricter and it does call for the right piping system based on the storm that we, we designed it for.
And what kind of guarantees, since you mentioned that? What kind of guarantees would this, could the town, not so much the town, but those residents get if this project is allowed to, to proceed? I mean, you know, saying, well, there shouldn't be any stormwater, but what's the real tangible, if there is issues that's created by this project, what, what's, what's, what's the recourse?
I think during, during development, the recourse will be to fix the, fix, while we're the developer and the owner of the property, yes, we'll, we'll fix any of the issues. I think we'll be able to determine very quickly that there is going to be. But we're very confident that there's not going to be.
Hypothetically, if there was an issue, what kind of, excuse me, what could you do about it? I mean, if you realize it, what would you do? Like I was sitting there suggesting, yeah, get rid of those eighteen townhomes, put in a BMP because I don't know nothing about what I'm talking about there. But what, what could be the solution then? If you realize that, that is impacting those neighbors?
Yeah, I mean, just like what, what eventually you think is, is weather being impacted now, I mean, there's going to be a reason so we can even figure out, you know, why is this happening? And then there are ways to address it, whether it's larger pipes, like you said, or ponds, I mean, whatever. I mean, whatever, I mean, there's a lot of different things. But what I'll say is, from just my experience, the sites that often can cause the problem, even where sometimes you think everything is squared up, is the sites that have a lot of steep slopes on them, especially like a two-to-one or a three-to-one slope. And there's a lot of other sites out there. This is not one of them. This is pretty flat. But I can't think of a relatively flat site that I've had drainage issues from. It's always coming from, you know, a forty-foot tall, two-to-one steep slope off the back. That can run away from you pretty quick unless you're, you know, really just all over it. This particular site from a drainage standpoint, I would call it, I would classify it as low risk.
If I could also mention that, you know, as part of a development project, after we've gone through site plan review and approved plans, once it goes into construction, you know, one of the final things that we do for the site is, whereas, as well as the county for the buildings, is, you know, they have to pass our compliance inspection. And, you know, if, if they can't pass the compliance inspection, then they can't occupy the buildings. So the town does have leverage in that sense, also in the toolbox.
We'll be outside inspecting along with the town inspectors, I mean, throughout the process, the erosion control measures, as well as the permanent BMP that's in place, we'll have to sign off on that, we'll do asphalt on that to make sure that everything's working correctly. And then there'll be a maintenance agreement on top of that to basically perpetuate, the HOA will maintain it for the town's regulation.
Patrick has something.
Okay, Patrick.
I would like to make a comment to the consultant that if you decide to put a dog park somewhere, if you could place it in the lowest area of the, the site rather than the highest area for environmental purposes, please.
Where would that be?
The lowest part.
They, they do have a few open spaces. Adam, if you could scroll back to the-
Adam, there's no plans for the dog park. We, we don't have a plan for that top corner of the space section.
One unique feature about the plan is how far off Chestnut, I mean, there is that one building term aside, but how far off Chestnut we are with development, I mean, it's, it's fairly substantial, it's several hundred feet off of Chestnut. I mean, with the pond there and everything, you know, will be tree-lined, it, it will be very nice.
Any other questions by council?
I have none.
None, surely?
No. I met with, I'm going to say this, I met with Scott and Mr. Norris, so that our absent person that's next to me here, they were very good to work with. You went with the fifty-foot buffer. I mean, you really tried to accommodate everybody's needs and with integrity and, you know, not because you're from the family, Scott, but your mother did say something all the time when we were on council together and I, I never understood what it meant really until I got on council. You know, you've got to raise the bar and do what you can to keep the town in the best shape you can. You're welcome.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll need a vote, oh.
Well, we need to know what the motions are, right?
Okay, right, well.
Do you have, do you have the text that we can, or you read it and we either say yeah and eh, or the mayor will read it?
You want me to read it or you want to read it?
Sure. The mayor has a ready voice.
From where there? Okay. The proposed, I've never done this before. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Quality of life goal number one, the proposed request will give the opportunity to establish a unique identity in this area. The higher density of townhomes would be a reasonable transition closer to the center of the old Monroe Village with commercial slash retail uses. Land use and housing goal number one, the proposed project will provide a housing option that is not abundantly available in this area, which gives the community more residential options from which to choose from. Do I have to read, read the rest of it? Yep, you already read that, didn't you? The rezoning request is a reasonable request and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of indigent trail comprehensive plan in the areas of quality of life as well as land use and housing. Planning board recommendation was based on the consistency with the, with the comprehensive plan, the planning board recommended approval of this ordinance amendment. Town council will need to take one of the following actions. Receive the staff report and public testimony. One, concur with the findings and transmit all of the planning board to approve in finding the consistency with the comprehensive plan findings. Two, concur with the findings and approve as modified by council. Or three, do not make the findings and deny the amendment. I'll need a motion on that one way or the other, anyone care to make one? Did I do that correctly?
Second, Karen has a question.
Right, we do need two motions.
Mic is off. Turn it off, sorry.
Sorry about that. Two motions, one to approve the reasonable, statement of reasonableness and consistency that the mayor just read into the record. And then the second motion will be to approve or deny or modify the rezoning request.
Okay. Anyone care to make the first motion? For consistency findings?
Does anybody have any other questions? But there's no public comments right now.
No, public comments, public comments were already done. Who?
Gentleman is asking if he could speak, but-
Counsel, do you mind allowing public comment? I'm going to reopen the public comments for one person. Sir, if you would step to the microphone.
Can you-
Can you step to the microphone?
And state your name as well.
Thank you.
I live in Chris Mark and it's similar to this development here. Everything they do, not only this building group, but any group that's building homes in our town that we live in here affects everybody because we have to worry about the traffic, we got to worry about traffic lights, and then we wind up widening the roads. Somebody's got to pay for this, you know? These buildings, are they far enough back off the road so we don't have a parking, a parking problem like we have in Chris Mark? Are they too close together where there's, if it catches fire, will it connect to the next building? Is there any walls between these things, these units, so that the fire won't obstruct or cause the move across and take out the whole development along with all the other houses that are there? I know that some of the developments, when they had a fire, it just melted the siding off the next house. It was so close. You're allowing this? If they have a fa, I don't know if this is for retirement or community, but if you've got a family that have four, where do you park these cars? There isn't, you allow the builders to come in to build these houses, they're so close to the road, the road is narrow as it is, you're allowing minimal on the size of these roads. And we, as the residents, have to suffer because they're, they're down the road with the money in their pockets and they don't have to answer to any of this. Now, as far as what you said earlier about how do we guarantee? Well, I'm from, I used to be living in New Jersey. We, our town used to hold them for a bond. If they, if they're, after they're completed their building and the money that is put into the bond, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, they don't get their bond back. That's all there is too. It's very easy to resolve some of these issues. But I think that you're going to have to worry about schools and everything else. The traffic is the biggest problem. You can't put another traffic light in this town, you can't get through as it is. So I don't know, I think it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation for the builders and for the community. You're going to have to work together here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, Jerry. Please hold their applause.
I'd like to respond because a lot of what you just said was a lot of what we said to this gentleman here, because we're dealing with the Chris Mark situation and that's unacceptable, was done years ago and my pers, well, I, I don't know who, necessarily who the developer was, but probably couldn't do bad enough things with that situation. We addressed the driveway lengths here. That was one of our big concerns, because over in Chris Mark, y'all got no place to park other than on the grass and you can't do that. A lot, all these issues that you just raised are very good issues and we addressed those with this developer. Doesn't mean that, that I'm in favor of the project, I just want to reassure you that what you just brought up was brought up. And, and I will say that Mr. Vickery, they have lived in this community as long as I have and, and I've, I've been here, I'm fifty-seven. I don't, I don't believe this gentleman would up and run on a bad situation. I've seen the products that they have put out, they are good product. The concern about backing it off the road, they have worked with the DOT, so when that road is widened to four lanes, that it won't impact the development and cost us more money to buy houses and buy property to widen the road. But these are very good, genuine concerns that you brought up and I'm glad that you did. Thank you so much.
Okay.
So I guess you need two, you need, you need motions from us then?
Yes.
Alright, so I'm going to make a first, the first motion, unless there's any more comments.
No.
Alright, so I want to concur with the findings and the transmission, transmission of the planning board to approve-
The consistency findings.
The consistency findings.
Into record. Mr. McIntyre's made that motion, all in favor with the consistency findings, raise your hand. Opposed? Jerry, did you raise your hand at all?
I did.
Yes, it is, it was unanimous.
Unanimous, okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand, Jerry. I need another motion, I guess, to approve, deny, or table this product or this vote, correct?
Yep, a motion to approve the rezoning request.
Yes.
I want to make a motion to approve the rezoning request.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve the rezoning request, all in favor? Opposed? Let the record stand, all were in favor. Mr. Morse opposing, the rezoning is approved.
Thank you, counsel.
That brings us to all business, the Veterans Memorial Garden ribbon cutting. Okay, I guess that's me, Patrick?
You could go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Quick update, if I miss anything, you'll-
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Is it, it's the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth, I always-
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. Counsel, by now you, this is just a quick update on the Veteran Memorial ribbon cutting. As you've seen, by now you've seen an agenda go out and-
Changes and additions.
Some changes to it. And there may be a couple little tweaks as far as times, because we're trying to work on a flyover right after taps and that we may have to adjust the time of different people for a couple minutes here and there based off the pilots. We're at their mercy right now if we, and we should find out in the next couple days whether or not we'd be able to get the flyover. Patrick's worked real hard on, on everything. We've worked with the schools, we're just going to have some representation from our public schools. We'll have different branches of the military, we're going to have a wreath laying in remembrance of, of Memorial Day for its true meaning. And we are pretty much, we, we've found a actual local World War II veteran that was a POW in a German prisoner of war camp that we are, have asked if he would come and lay the wreath. We thought that would be more than appropriate considering as we're working on an update list for dignitaries from around the state that are Union County representatives. Patrick's rightfully so adamant about getting as much educators here, because this is definitely an education tool for remembering our veterans and a place for veterans to come to reflect. The VFW has agreed to move their, not do their festivities they normally do on Memorial Day, to be here, to be a big part of it. Other than that, Patrick, I think we've moved it to six forty-five for the council to arrive and in town hall and with the actual memorial garden ribbon cutting and festivities to begin at-
For right now, at eight forty-five, we keep looking at the bus-
Seven forty-five for everything, eight forty-five for-
The wreath laying.
Actually, eight forty-five is when we-
Played a video.
Do we have the, I'm not, I'm not, I thought it was eight forty-five.
There we go.
It's on your screen.
Six forty-five is the banquet, seven forty-five is the welcome and introduction. And the memorial lighting, yes.
Yes. Okay, what, is there anything else, Patrick?
No, I'd just like to say the only outstanding items is the plaques themselves. So irrigation, landscape, and lighting, all that is completed. As you mentioned, the agenda is completed, we're only waiting on the school. And we are going to work closely with Captain Chase and actually Captain Chase has a plan probably in place right now.
I forgot, we're having a cookout that night, Patrick. Sergeant James Gobbin's working on it from our end and so he's been back and forth with Patrick and we're good to go, we're excited about it.
And all the assignments have been given to staff, so we're ready to go.
The plaques will be in before?
Yes, that is correct. All of them will be installed before.
Patrick, I did have a chance to speak with the American Legion last night.
Yes, sir.
And they, and they're happy to, to attend. So if we can get some more information to them, and they also have some names for plaques as well for you.
Is it possible, Mr. Morse, to share a contact number so we could send them everybody invitations?
Okay. 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 Adam, did you have a bad?
The only thing I would say about the plaques is if the name is wanted on the plaque, we have to know by tomorrow afternoon if it wants to be there before the ceremony. So if we don't know by tomorrow afternoon, I can't guarantee that the guy that's doing the sandblasting will be able to get it put on.
But all the submitted ones are covered?
Everybody so far is covered up until tomorrow afternoon and then we've got a, we don't know after that.
Okay. And just real quick, thank you to counsel, Patrick, staff, all our generous donors that have helped bring us to the point we're at. I think the memorial's long overdue and definitely will be of very big value, add to this town and be able to allow us to honor our veterans in the very best way we know how. Thank you. That brings us to new business, Oakstone Speed Limit Ordinance. Mr. Huntziger.
...
Alright, Mayor and Council, real quick, this won't take very long. Basically, the DOT reached out to us, they had a request came in from a homeowner at the Oakstone subdivision. I wanted y'all to get a visual of what the subdivision looks like, y'all didn't really have that in your packet. But all the roads are DOT roads and basically this owner, I mean, property owner came to request to see if, all these roads right now are thirty-five miles an hour and she wanted them twenty-five miles an hour. DOT does have a program to reduce the speeds of roads, so again, she reached out to DOT. But being that this is in town limits, they have to go through Raleigh and basically come up with a municipality declaration agreement with us. And so you have base, staff has looked the roads, we don't have a problem dropping it twenty-five, but as a council, you have to approve, so being that you have to go in agreement with that. So we just need you to either approve or deny the request.
The request is only for the area in red, which means that the one that is not in red, it's still going to be thirty-five? Is that what?
No, that is a, a town subdivision, so those are twenty-five already.
Okay.
Okay. We'll need a motion if there's no questions. Anyone?
Actually, I'm, sorry, I misspoke. That, we don't own those streets down there, but they didn't, that's another subdivision in itself, so-
So it's everything in the red?
Yeah, that's lar- Yeah, that's Laura, that's Laura Creek, Oakstone was in the red, so again, I don't even know what the speed limit is in Laura Creek as far as DOTs or roads are concerned.
Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, council, usually when we, when you have long runs like that, as you see, a lot of the time, people speed up, and I think it'll be, it'll be applicable, the right place to go ahead and reduce the speed limit for that subdivision.
Mr. Morse?
It sounds fine to reduce the speed, but is a sign going to do that, or is a traffic calming measure a better approach?
No, we, we do have to post, we do have to pace, they have to post signs anytime it's not 35 mile per hour or otherwise posted. So, if they follow the rule, then they have to put the 25 mile per hour sign. But both of them will reduce the speed, will assist in reducing the speed. So, to answer your questions, it's a state street, then they will have to post the signage for that at 25 mile per hour.
Will the state come back and put, you know, like road humps or anything like that if it's still a problem?
The state has a traffic calming policy just like we do, but unfortunately, it's pretty strict. A subdivision like this, it's not, it's not going to pass their policy. It's, it's very hard to get approved for those types of devices.
They rely on large number of residents to get on a petition so they could approve it. So, that's exactly what...
Okay. We need a motion, council?
I'll make a motion to approve the Oakstone Speed Limit Ordinance, Ordinance 311.
Mr. Head's made the motion to approve, all in favor? That would be unanimous, motion approved. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
That brings us to manager's update. Patrick, do you have anything else to add?
No, we just like to say that we're working diligently on the budget to be prepared for Saturday, and right after that, we will go ahead and generate the manager's report for the last five weeks.
Okay.
And I'd like to see if council had any questions. Right now, I'll be more than happy to respond.
So, our first look is going to be Saturday on the budget?
Yes, sir. And we will send something in regard to the timing for council, but we're looking at 9:00 to 1:00.
Will we get a packet beforehand?
Yes.
Okay. Before Saturday?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to council comments.
Ms. Howe?
Well, a lot of kids were in here, and I think it was great that we had the art contest. It's, they were very talented for their age, it's unbelievable. So, we're glad that everybody participated, and I guess you'll be seeing it in the art room then, when it's, they're going to be hung in the art room?
Yes, ma'am, at the, the medium conference room that we have at the bottom. We'll be there for you.
Thank the members for being here tonight, and drive safely, although I have a chauffeur driving me home tonight, it's not an Uber, but I better watch him. Thank you.
Mr. Morse?
Well, thank you to everyone that came this evening, especially those that have the courage to speak out on things that, that doesn't, doesn't make you happy, and that's a, it's always a good thing. Like to thank Chase for, and his deputies for stepping up patrols recently. There's been a lot of, I think, educational type of activities done by the sheriff's office to remind people that those super streets, even though they got those crazy U-turns, you're not supposed to run them on red. It's just, it's, it causes problems for the rest of us. Thank you, everyone, again, for coming out and speaking tonight. Your concerns are genuine, and we genuinely are concerned for you. And we, we're open to anything that you, if you want to reach out to us individually, especially myself, I welcome that, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the Memorial Day celebration. Thank you all, have a good night.
Mr. McIntyre?
My, my head's really pounding right now, so I'll just be brief and say, thank you very much for coming, I appreciate everybody's time, and drive safe home.
Mr. Head?
The school art was phenomenal, and thanks to, to Patrick and Susan for putting this on. I thought this was, I mean, to see what the kids have done was just tremendous. Adam, Public Works Week, thank you for all you do, and Mr. Wright, Chase, Law Enforcement Week, as always, we thank you. Council, we always work well with each other. We may not always agree, but I think we always try to come up with, with what we think is the right decision. Good crowd. Hopefully, we'll have these crowds continue to happen. Everybody drive home safe. Thank you.
Mayor Alvarez?
Patrick, I want to give you a special thank you for even thinking of the, recognizing the students and the art. That was very nice of you, and we really enjoyed that. And also for you, your leadership, the staff, all your hard work to provide this council with the very best information, most accurate information that you, for them to make the very best decision. So, I tip my hat to you and your staff for all you have done. Council, you're a wonderful group of people, all of you. I'm about, out and about in the town with a lot of elected officials, a lot of people around, and in the time I've been here, this is the only time everybody's positive about a town council and the way they work together. And it shows, it shows in your community, it shows everywhere you go, that you can respectfully disagree, and you've made this town proud again and made government functional, probably in the only place around. So, thank you, thank you for that. I received a letter that I just read, I'm going to pass it to council. It's in regards to the super street. Looks like DOT is, from what this is read, if you want to reach out to Caldwell Collision, they're making them take down signs and other businesses take down signs now that weren't meant to be taken down, and people can't find their businesses now. So, I for one, if there's anything we could do to start to put some pressure on DOT to rein them in a little bit on the way they're affecting our businesses along 74, we've lost a couple businesses already, and they're affecting longtime businesses here. And I understand their job is to keep traffic flowing, and collateral damage is not even on their mind, but that's all that's on our mind, and we need to keep them aware of what they're doing. I sympathize for the people in the Brandon Oaks community. As a real estate professional, I'm torn, the median's been there for years, it was there when people bought the homes, they saw it when they bought the homes, but on the flip side, I know Chase does an outstanding job, and I know public safety does a fine job with everything to get wherever they need, and it is a real concern whether or not emergency vehicles can get through there, with, continue to get through there if there's multiple. I know the sheriffs can, but I, I too would be concerned about the fire trucks and the ambulances, and if we could actually get some information on that, that would be, be great. And to, and I realize that's an HOA issue, but it, it is concerning. And I, like Jerry, I feel them, I feel them very much so, and wish there was something more we could do. Chase, thank you. I mean, you can have an entire road blocked, you'd find a way to get over it and get to where you need to be. Thank you again, Law Enforcement Week. And, you know, if you see them around, they're headed, they're behind you in line, or you see them in line, if you can, treat an officer to lunch. Yes, they need to eat too. It's okay.
We've got a little bet going on now, so we're going to... Loser, so don't buy lunch.
Okay, they need donuts. And let me know who you buy the donuts for, so I can bet on the one that doesn't get the donuts. And gentleman's last, the last thing, last concern, most of these subdivisions that are in concern now were approved 20, 30 years ago or more, and the rules and regulations that have put, been put in place nowadays is extremely stringent, and this council really scrutinizes everything now that comes before them. They know your concerns, they've heard them, we've all heard them, we've inherited a mess in this town, in this county, from poor building designs everywhere, and they are working very hard to even go back in time to try and fix some of those. But money, time, everything takes a long time to go back and repair the errors of the past, and for that, I'm grateful for the hard work that they've done. On that note, everyone, have a blessed week, continue to keep all of our students and schools and colleges in your prayers. It's a crazy world out there, and it doesn't seem like it's getting any better. That being said, God bless. I'll need a motion to adjourn. Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to adjourn, all in favor? All right, good night, everyone. No, no closed session.